Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alariah.
Would you please stand to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank you for being here this morning and a special thanks to Huron County Commissioners who are our honored guests this morning. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please start?
The joint meeting will take with Huron County Commissioners regarding Draper Ditch, I did give everybody a copy of the resolution we have to pass this morning.
Okay, and here's who's here to speak on this issue.
The Huron County Commissioners if they have any questions. And Ms. Mallett is here.
Okay, should you have a seat?
Yes, I think so. I'm over here. Would you like me to read the resolution?
Yes, please.
In the matter of approving and certifying county auditor assessments for Draper Ditch and joint ditch project in Lorraine and Huron Counties, be resolved by the Joint Board of County Commissioners of Lorraine and Huron that we do hereby approve and certify assessments of the county auditors, recommend a maintenance rate for the year 2003 at 10%. Further be resolved, Lorraine County Engineers Office is in the process of setting up a program to do one section per year and keeping it motor sprain each year thereafter.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in regards to this issue or have any questions?
Ma'am Chair, for the record, I think we ought to introduce the Huron County Commissioners if Hal can pick them up so they can see we do joint things every once in a while. And they came this year because we went to Huron County last year. On the far left is Commissioner Terry Booze, Commissioner Artith Chop, and Commissioner Mike Adelman. And welcome. We enjoyed our visit to your facility last year. Is there anyone from the Lorraine County Engineers Office who wants to speak to this issue? You don't want to talk, Jim? Okay. Well, last year when we were in Huron County, their soil and water conservation person gave a little tap dance about what this was about. So, apparently this is an annual thing that we do?
Yes.
Okay. If there's no comments, I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Oh, no, someone from Huron should move for approval.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Adelman, since this is a joint meeting.
Commissioner Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner Adelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Basie?
Aye.
Commissioner Booze?
Yes.
Commissioner Chop?
Yes.
So moved, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now, you're welcome to stay, but if you leave, we'll understand that you have more pressing business in Huron County.
Actually, we're on the road today because now we're going over to Seneca County for a similar resolution.
Oh, great. Well, don't forget to stop for lunch.
Have a safe trip.
Thank you.
And we'll see you next year in Huron County.
Maybe the sun will be shining then.
Oh, that would be nice. Could you arrange it?
Let Cheryl know.
Yes, I'll send something over. Thank you. At 10:15, there will be a hearing regarding considering to rename Dunham Road to rest Dunham Road in Grafton. And at 10:30, a second public hearing on the CDVG FY03. Number one, under resolutions, job and family services bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
There was an advance, one?
The amount? Mr. Cordez, are we, was that the advance to the?
This is the advance from this week.
The, is that the advance to the Drug and Alcohol Board? I thought there was two advances.
I'm sorry, those two.
One of them, a request that we put on hold. I need to review that a little bit further.
Which one?
The one, the Drug and Alcohol. I spoke to Mr. Roca C. about it, he had some concerns, and I had a misunderstanding of what fund we were talking about, and I want to review the level of that advance with him. I now have some equal concerns that he had, so I'd like to wait until next week on that and see that the level of the advance is absolutely necessary. We're talking about almost a million dollars there.
Okay. But there is still one advance from the bridge. It's a repayment, actually.
All right.
So, on the one demand, alcohol and drug, I'll meet with Mr. Roca C., we'll have a recommendation for you for next board meeting.
Okay, I will move to hold the alcohol and drug advance and move to approve the other.
Second. Further discussion? Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Ma'am Chair, I think we have an executive session?
Yes, I'd like to request an executive session for the specific purpose of discussing potential new hires and a matter of litigation has allowed under the Sunshine Law.
Okay, thank you.
Under Commissioners, number 10, calling upon Ohio lawmakers to restore budget cuts for programming for vulnerable citizens in all Ohio counties, including Lorraine County.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Award bid to various vendors for food items to be supplied to Lorraine County Golden Acres County Home and Lorraine Medina Community Base Correctional Facility for the period of July 1st, 2000, that should be 2003, to December 31st, 2003.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Under Children and Families Council, 12, approve and enter into various contracts between Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, administrative agent for Lorraine County Children and Families Council for the fiscal year 2004, for the Help Me Grow Program effective July 1st, 2003 through June 30th, 2004. Would you like me to read all 12 of the amounts?
No, I think it's sufficient to have them on the agenda. Juan was here. Oh, there you are. Juan, do you have any comments on any of these?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Juan Malina Crespo, Director of the Lorraine County Children and Families Council. The only comment, Madam Chair, is that these are our partners and have been our partners for the past several years. We do have one new vendor that we're excited about, which is the Lincoln Counseling Center for Infant Mental Health Services. I would just like to report briefly that for fiscal year '03, which ends now at the end of the month, that we've expended, as of June 10th, 96% of our award, and we currently have enrolled over 1,700 children in the Help Me Grow Program. So that's really what I'd just like to share with the board this morning.
Okay, thank you, Juan. Anybody have any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Also move for approval as outlined in number 12.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, 13, award various contracts on behalf of Lorraine County Community Development Department to provide private owner rehabilitation assistance through the Community Housing Improvement Program to be paid from account 2240120, excuse me, 2601 for FID 0111. A is William and Rosanna Hints, 33721 Lake Road, Avon Lake, needs repairs to exterior and interior of the residence such as roof, plumbing, electrical, and lead abatement renovation work. The estimated cost for the residence to be rehabilitated was $33,495. Two bids were received. The lowest investment received was in the amount of $32,315 from Dilly Door Company, Defiance Ohio. Dilly Door is a certified lead abatement contractor with over 42 years of experience of lead abatement and home renovations. B, Timothy Pelos, 5377 Lewis Avenue, Sheffield Township, needs repairs to exterior and interior of the residence such as roof repair, plumbing, electrical, and heating. The estimated cost to rehabilitate this residence was $34,830. The lowest investment bid received was in the amount of $38,313 from Dilly Door Company, Defiance Ohio.
So moved.
I'll second. Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Approve and enter into contract with Lorraine County Urban League, Alariah, Ohio, in the amount not to exceed $15,000, to provide fair housing services for Lorraine County CDVG grant for fiscal year 2003. This bid was the only bid received, and the Urban League has provided these services in the previous fiscal years in Lorraine County, says.
Also move. Second. Discussion. Yes. Ron, you know, it would be interesting to know how many cases were heard last year. Do you have any idea off the top of your head?
I don't know off the top of my head how many people had called in with concerns or how many they have provided assistance to, but I will be happy to get that to you tomorrow so that the Commissioners all have that.
I'd appreciate it, I think it would just be interesting.
And we had to bid it this year because the state, in the past, it was just part of the application process, but the state has said that we need to open this up for bidding, and that's why we're doing this so that it's effective September 1st.
Are you saying it was bid out?
Yes. Was bid out? Yes, and it was only one group or entity that responded to the bid. Four people or organizations took the bid packet, but the Urban League was the only one to respond with a price.
Well, they've been doing it in the past.
Yeah, yeah, and we've been very happy with them.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
Sure.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, number 15, authorized payment in the amount of $115,494 per month from the County General Fund mandated shares outlined payable to Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services in compliance with ORC 5101.16 through 5101.161, effective July 2003 through June 2004 for SFY 2004. A minimum of an additional 5% of the State of Ohio certified amount of the county's share, $1,385,928, for SFY 04, will be appropriated in general fund public assistance grants for '04 calendar budget year.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Approve and enter into various transportation agreements on behalf of Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, effective July 1st, 2003 through June 30th, 2004, to be paid from account 205010903450127. Transportation, A, diversified transportation services, Toledo, Ohio, in the amount of $70,000, and contract can be renewed for one additional year for the same terms. B, Life Care Ambulance Incorporated, Alariah, in the amount of $10,000, and this is the one-year renewable allowed in the original contract. And C, Lorraine County Transit, Lorraine, Ohio, in the amount of $55,000, with new rates as $19.50 per one-way trip, $15 per no-show, including ADA certified clients, and $1 per authorized extra family member. Transportation services are for clients in need of diagnostic and preventive medical treatments.
Also move. Second.
Discussion.
Is there anyone here that would like to comment on any of these issues? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Approve and enter into various purchase of service agreement on behalf of Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services. A, Lorraine City Schools for the Fast Track GED Program in the amount of $48,789.36, using TANF dollars for SFY 04, effective July 1st, 2003 through June 30th, 2004. B, Lorraine City Schools for the Fast Track ESOL, English Speakers of Other Languages Program, in the amount of $46,235.59, using TANF dollars for SFY 04, effective July 1st, 2003 through June 30th, 2004. C, Common Ground Overland, Ohio, for summer earth camp, for 125 TANF children, in the sum of $19,375, effective June 23rd, 2003 through August 1st, 2003. And D, Horizons Activities Center, North Homestead, Ohio, for summer camp for 693 TANF children, in the sum not to exceed $80,000, effective June 23rd, 2003 through August 15th, 2003.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Is there any comment on any of these programs? Okay.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Approve and enter into various purchase of service contracts on behalf of Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, using Title 20 allocation for SFY 2004. A, Cambridge Home Healthcare Inc., Home Care Health, Home Health Aid, $27,500. Catholic Charity Services of Lorraine County for Adult Daycare, $84,000. Neighborhood House Association for Protective Services for Adults, $105,000. Safe Harbor of Lorraine County Protective Services for Adults, $24,000. And Volunteer Guardianship Program for the Adult Guardianship, $11,000.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Any comments? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Enter into a maintenance plan contract for Windows version of the Quarterly Information System, QUIC, and Random Moment Sampling Systems, RMS, which is part of the Maximus Ledger Suite, MLS, in the amount of $2,225, with Maximus Inc., Columbus, Ohio, effective July 1st, 2003 through June 30th, 2004, to be paid from contract services 20501090345011, and this contract is lower than the current fee of $2,500.
Also move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Approve and enter into administrative service contract between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Lorraine County Workforce Development Agency for fiscal year 2004, effective July 1st, 2003 through June 30th, 2004, in the amount not to exceed $10,000.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, 21, approve the request of Lorraine County Domestic Relations Court, Juvenile Division, to apply for funding in the amount of $50,000 from Allstate Foundation and $5,000 from Scripps Howard Foundation. The funding from Allstate will enable the court to continue the successful youth program, which focuses on juveniles who are low functioning and struggling in the educational environment. And funding from Scripps Howard will assist the court in initiating the Family Education Core Program to focus on truant use in Lorraine County. There is no cash match from the general fund required for these programs.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, even though there's no cash match to the programs, what is the future of these programs if the funding dries out? Will general fund money be needed?
Good morning, Commissioner, Tim Moitzl.
Good morning.
Domestic Relations. If the funding was to dry, we're going to continue to search for new grants, that's why we've been back here so often.
And we're so glad to see you.
We just, I'm trying to find every grant out there that we could possibly, that we meet their criteria, and if the funding dries out, the court is prepared to pick it up under our budget. We've got a lot invested in both of these programs so far and believe in these programs, so it won't fall back on general fund.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Tim.
Do we have a question? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Under the Engineers, number 22, accept improvements on behalf of the Amherst Township Trustees and enter into one-year maintenance agreement for Hillside, number 10 subdivision, Amherst Township, Edward J. and Wanda Lee Gargis Developer. There are 17 lots, 213 through 229, and the concrete pavement and storm sewers were installed and approved by the county engineer, as well as inspection fees were received, and the water mains and sanitary sewer were installed and approved by City of Lorraine. The subdivision has reported in Lorraine County records, Platts, as Bardish Drive with road number T 259 extending east 711.68 feet or 0.135 miles in length from Stone Valley Drive, T 226, to the norly line of Hillside, number 7 subdivision.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Any comments or questions?
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Accept improvements on behalf of the Amherst Township Trustees and enter into one-year maintenance agreement for Hillside, number 11 subdivision, Amherst Township, Edward J. and Wanda Lee Gargis Developer. There are four lots, 230 to 233, and the concrete pavement and storm sewers were installed and approved by county engineer, as well as inspection fees were received, and the water mains and sanitary sewers were installed and approved by the City of Lorraine. This subdivision has reported in Lorraine County records, Platts, as Moss Canyon Drive with a road number T 1474 extending west 266.42 feet or 0.050 miles in length from Stone Valley Drive, T 226, to the west line of Hen Valley, number 12 subdivision.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Every time I ask, nobody has any comments or questions. I'm going to ask again. Any comments, questions, concerns? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for the furnishing of all labor, material, and equipment for the replacing East River Road Bridge, number 0225, and all by grow culvert 0014. Notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram and Morning Journal on June 25th and July 2nd, 2003, and bids are to be opened on July 9th at 2:00 p.m. in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Number 25, award contract to Crossroads Asphalt Recycling, Clemey Station, Ohio, in the amount of $98,447.40 to be paid from MBGT 220011102450301 for the 2003 hot applied crack sale program. Three bids were received. This bid was 1% above the lowest bidder, but in compliance with Resolution 01132, local preference and within the Engineers' estimates of $19,917.
I believe we were asked to hold this for review.
Mr. Kearney is here. He may wish to speak on it and afterwards will also address the issue.
Okay. Mr. Kearney, did you want to speak on this issue?
That was, good morning, by the way.
Good morning.
Kind of move if Mr. Ennis would step in, because I'm going to relate the majority of his concerns to the legal concept of it.
Can I guess? There will interrupt you. There are a number of, there are a number of legal issues that have been presented to me just in the last couple of days. I haven't had an opportunity to thoroughly investigate those. I don't know how you feel about, can you add some concern about waiting a week on these? Do you still have those concerns?
We have it scheduled for this Monday, and I have my road strippers delayed until we are ready to finish our crack sealing so they can commence on their re-striping those particular sections of roads that are being held at the moment. But as I say, my letter recommended the, within the agreement, within the resolution of 01136, whatever, as it related to local preference, which we've done before and followed what we've done before, and that's why I recommended action this Thursday morning.
There was, there was some unique arguments raised concerning weighing in on the exact meaning of local preference. While clearly, I know you need to move forward on Monday, and idling a team is not necessarily in the best interest for anybody, I suggest that we hold this at least to the end of the meeting. We have an executive session, maybe we could have Mr. Ennis look at it a little bit. There was some arguments raised that need to be reviewed before this contract gets approved.
Well, Mr. Kearney can come into the executive session with us, and we could discuss this because it could possibly be pending or could possibly run into some legal areas.
I can discuss with you in the executive session the legal issues that you need to consider, cannot discuss with you the merits of awarding the bid.
I understand that. But I'm sure Mr. Kearney would like to hear them. I would ask that he attend the executive session with us.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay.
So we're going to hold that till after our executive session?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Cordez, County Administrator?
My issues are for the executive session, thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant High Prosecutor?
I have no other business.
Commissioners report?
I have nothing this morning.
Commissioner Blair?
No, other than that I would like to publicly extend the Board of Commissioners condolences to the family of Mary Ann Jamison, our longtime county recorder who passed the, yeah, county recorder, my gosh, anyway. They had a lovely tribute at the service for Mary Ann, and the priest who gave the eulogy spoke to her Hungarian heritage and how it was a custom of the Hungarian people to welcome newcomers into the area, and he brought that welcoming message into Mary Ann's life and her family and how she treated the public, and I thought it was a wonderful tribute to a very fine public servant. So that would be my comment, Commissioner.
Okay.
Old business?
I have none.
Under new business, number one, appoint Jeanette Bazooki as acting Lorraine County reporter.
So moved.
I'll second. Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I believe Ms. Bazooki is in the audience. If she would like to come forward and just identify herself to the audience here. Good morning, Jeanette.
This is really a great honor for me. I've been waiting for this a long time. I would like to thank the Commissioners for having the faith in me to carry out the duties of the Recorder's Office, and I promise that I won't let you down. And that's it, thank you very much.
We know that you're going to do a great job. You've been there a long time.
Thank you.
Number two, July 24, 2003, at 7:00 p.m., will be the third night meeting at Eden Township Hall, 12043 Avon Belden Road, Grafton, Ohio. Therefore, no meeting will be held that morning. Board of Correspondents?
I will be reading, be waved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Public comment?
Shirley R. Johnson, Overland. In regard to the item number 14, which was the contract for Lorraine County Urban League to provide fair housing services for Lorraine County, I'm glad that Ms. Basie asked for a report about that because I think it's important for us in the community. I think it should be released to the community for us to know what number and kind of problem still exists in this area that we need to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Butler?
Morning, Mary.
My name is Mary Butler. I live at 928 Hollywood Drive, Alariah, and I'm here this morning to speak about transportation needed in Lorraine County. After serving eight years on Lorraine County Transit Board and two and a half years as After serving eight years on Loraine County Transit Board and two and a half years as an alternate, I believe I know a little something about this county's transit needs. I am a private citizen now, no longer with a formal affiliation to Loraine County Transit, but definitely with an underlying loyalty to see the services and the residents of Loraine County need provided. I've been involved with Loraine County Transit during, since during the 1970s, when they had public hearings and when a Vista worker came to Loraine County and studied the need for transportation. I don't know if anyone here remembers, but his name was Alan Bell, very young, very nice young man. He and I talked many times during his few months here. There was a lengthy report written, which I would believe the county has sitting on a shelf someplace. The county commissioners established the Loraine County Transit and the board, and Ken Burge became the first general manager. Loraine County Transit finally began the true bus services. Loraine County Transit was a system with no buses for many years. They began the bus system in 1986 through a dial-a-ride van. Most of the people served at that point were people with disabilities of all ages. Loraine County Transit grew, and under John Hall, the second general manager, I got more involved with the levy campaign. That levy failed, as did the next try in the mid-1990s, but with each levy attempt, Loraine County Transit gained more support. Bill Eltrich, the former planner who then became general manager, was responsible for beginning the fixed route services under John Hall. Over the years, every vehicle Loraine County Transit has on the road has become wheelchair-accessible, which means that every vehicle has a lift on it which may be ridden by someone either in a wheelchair or someone who is standing who has difficulty climbing stairs. More than a year ago, drivers began counting how many people in wheelchairs, they call them PIWs, were riding Loraine County Transit's fixed route. The number has steadily risen month by month over the last year to, the most recent count which is completed was in April, and that showed 507 rides made by someone in a wheelchair. I emphasize that was on fixed route because this number has never been included in transportation dial-a-ride services. The dial-a-ride is also called sometimes the ADA or the Americans with Disabilities Act complementary service, but it's mandated by the Americans with Disabilities Act. That number does not include any other mobile people with disabilities, regardless of age, who rode fixed route. People with disabilities of all ages are among the poorest of all of Loraine County's residents. Many acquire their disability through the aging process referred to by many older adults as their ailment or their condition instead of a disability. Not like me. I've had my disability my whole life. Why am I here today? The Commissioners have said that they will not allow Loraine County Transit to go to the people of Loraine County and ask them to fund the services through a quarter percent sales tax, which would also allow them to continue expansion according to the five-year plan that has been written. I've been down to Columbus the last three months begging our legislators not to cut human services to the people of Ohio. Now I am here pleading for all of the people of Loraine County who either do not have a vehicle or cannot afford to drive the one they do have, asking you, the Commissioners, to maintain Loraine County Transit at the very least at the present level of funding. I will be back at a future meeting to give you some more information and statistics, hoping to persuade you that funding is the right thing to do for Loraine County Transit, and I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for that overview, Mary. It was interesting. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to address the Board? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bob Beck. I'm an attorney with Reno, Bogdan, and Ferber in Sandusky, Ohio, and I'm here with Erie Blacktop, and with me is Laren Weichel, who is the project manager, the bidder and estimator on the hot seal, crack seal project that was just bid and that was the subject of item number 25. And a couple issues were referenced this morning, and apparently you're going to go into executive session to discuss those. I'd like to just give you some fodder, some food for thought, if I could. The resolution that the Board of Commissioners has passed for Loraine County references a local preference given to local businesses with a principal place of business defined as a business with a significant economic and physical presence in Loraine County. So that's the definition of what really, who should be getting a local preference. That is, somebody or a business with a significant economic and physical presence in Loraine County. Now, the bid that we're talking about was recently bid, and it was about $100,000 bid, and Erie Blacktop was low on this job by, I think, less than $1,000. And we have estimated that to be just less than or approximating 1/10th of a percent in difference between the low bidder and the second lowest bidder. I believe that was Crossroads Asphalt Recycling, and I think a representative of that company is here today. I highlight that to you to share with you the meaning that we're talking about competitive nature of a bid and estimating, it can get that close, 1/10th of a percent. Now, the resolution also says that the Board of Commissioners will consider the local preference only upon a determination that its application does not impair the competitive integrity of the bid process. Now, those are the two issues I just want to briefly talk about. Does Erie Blacktop, who is, who has got an office and a significant presence in Erie County, does it have a significant economic and physical presence in Loraine County? And if the bid is taken away, or if the resolution is adopted or considered or applied here, does that impair the competitive nature of the bidding process? And I'd submit to you that the answer to both those questions is yes, emphatic yes. The first is Erie Blacktop has been doing business in Loraine County. We discussed, we remember jobs back in the 80s, possibly as early as the 70s, Erie Blacktop has done work, and you know that. You've awarded many projects, and Erie Blacktop has always appreciated the work that they've done for Mr. Kearney's department and the county in general. Also, we do a significant amount of work for private entities in Loraine County, and we've counted the numbers, millions and millions of dollars in work in Loraine County, which comes with purchase of fuel, materials, et cetera, that all make for a large, huge impact to Loraine County. Secondly, Erie Blacktop is a property owner in Loraine County. They own 41 acres in various localities. They pay property taxes. They're a taxpayer, so that's important. Additionally, I think maybe most important, they employ currently 12 Loraine County residents, and those residents bring their wages home, they spend them here in their home, and Loraine County receives income tax, I believe, from those wages. So all of those, the work, the purchases Erie Blacktop makes, the tax, the real estate taxes, the income taxes, the wages that are spent here, all those go, I believe, to say that Erie Blacktop certainly has a significant economic impact and fiscal presence in Loraine County. Now, that being said, I just think it goes without saying, it is absolutely clear that they have a huge impact and a presence in Loraine County. I think they meet the resolution to be given a local preference. Secondly, and I think more importantly, what impact if you take this resolution and apply it and take this job away from a low bidder and give it to a second bidder pursuant to this resolution? What impact does that have? Does that impair the competitive integrity of the bid process? And I said both these issues are answered yes, and I believe we can say that emphatically that could trickle down and create a significant competitive bidding problem, and here's how. To bid a job takes man-hours, commitment, you have to come and study the job, you have to meet with the engineers and study what you're going to do, you have to get your manufacturer's suppliers' information together, you have to put it all down on paper. It's not done in hours. I mean, it's a significant outlay of income to do that. If a low bidder recognizes that they can come in and lose a job, they're going to think twice before they come in and bid these jobs, okay? Especially if they felt that they were maybe unfairly taking away the work. The point is this, that these jobs are typically low margins. 1/10th of 1% is very narrow. When you apply a 3%, that makes it very difficult to come in and say, well, I can tack an extra profit of 3% onto this job just in case they're going to apply this local preference. I would submit to you that that 3% simply is not there in this type of industry, this type of issue. Now, there are many times where a local preference is called for. Ohio has a local preference to steal, buy Ohio steel, and I think that's important if commodities or products are manufactured in Loraine County. I believe Loraine County manufacturers should be given that preference. But I think in the type of industry that we're talking about here, very specific, where a very local contractor comes in and assists your community, there was three bids. If it went down to two, I believe that significantly impairs the competitive nature of these bids. So I would just urge you, recognize Erie Blacktop as the local contractor that they have, the committed contractor to your community. Recognize that they have had a fiscal and economic presence here for many years and that it's a significant presence, and please recognize it. If you make a decision to basically take away work from a low bidder of a contractor by its own, it's inherent in that process, that you are affecting the integrity of the bidding process. So we would just urge you to reconsider that resolution or number 25 and award the project to Erie Blacktop, and we know that you've been satisfied with their work in the past and that they do a great job for you in the future. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
You know, you brought up an interesting point. You said the product, when a product is purchased within the county, where is the Blacktop going to be purchased?
I'm going to defer to...
That's a major portion of the project.
My name's Laren Weichel. I'm the project manager and the estimator of this project. This is a hot crack fill job. It's a product, it's not a, it's not an asphalt blacktop product. It's a, it's a crack filling product, and actually, there's a number of different suppliers of this, none of them in Loraine County. So the material itself is not going to be produced in Loraine County. There isn't, there isn't a supplier in Loraine County. As far as asphalt itself, the blacktop itself, there are four asphalt plants in Loraine County owned by two separate companies, a company called Kukozing Materials and a company called Osterlin Materials. Neither of those companies have their home office as directed by your resolution, and as, they won't be recognized as a local company because their home offices are in other counties. So my, my question is, is the largest amount of tax dollars coming into your county from our line of work is from a material supplier? Four asphalt plants in Loraine County, producing approximately a million tons amongst them, and you get about a dollar a ton for each ton provided, so you get $1 million in sales tax out of those plants? You're not recognized in those companies as local contractors.
Are you, the same argument you just used to say why you couldn't buy the blacktop here because their principal offices in here is the, goes against the grain with the argument you just made. Are you willing to buy that blacktop here from a company that doesn't have its principal office here but yet has a significant business presence here? Isn't that the argument that you just made?
We're arguing that we have a significant business presence here.
But what about the, let me ask the question again. You said there was four blacktop companies here, there was, but they didn't have their principal office here, so they wouldn't qualify under our resolution. You don't have your principal office here either, so let's establish that. Before we go in, if the Commissioners were considering this, would they be considering based upon the premise that you would buy the blacktop from one of those companies located in Loraine County, regardless of whether they have their principal office here?
The, we have bought asphalt from Kukozing Materials in Sheffield in the past. This project that we're, that we're fighting for does not have blacktop on it. It's a crack filling job.
Okay, so there's no asphalt to buy?
No, there is not. And the supplier for us and the supplier from Crossroads won't come from Loraine County because there is no supplier of that material.
Okay, I got confused because it sounded, we started talking about asphalt, so I thought maybe there was some involved anywhere in the project.
It was on a tangent.
Okay, sorry. I got on your tangent.
Oh, the discussion is good.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Erin.
Okay, is there anyone else here that would like to address the Board? Okay, thank you.
There is a public hearing at 10:15, but it's like only 10:11, so.
Come on. Why don't we take a couple minutes break and then come back for a public hearing?
Is that okay?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
There has been a request for a road name change, portion of Dunham Road, Township Road between Loraine and Medina Counties to rename to West Dunham Road. On February 19, 2003, a letter was forwarded to Medina County Commissioner's Office requesting the road to be changed from West Dunham Road due mostly to 911 purposes, signed by Julian Burke, owner of Medina County, and Lawrence Paul, owner of Loraine County. Medina County Commissioner Steve Hamley forwarded this letter to Commissioner Blair, Loraine County Commissioner's Office. Commissioner Blair sent a copy of said request on March 31, 2003, to Loraine County Engineer Grafton Township Trustees and Loraine County Prosecutor's Office. April 3, 2003, Ken Kearney, Loraine County Engineer, reviewed the request. Dunham Road begins at Chamberlain Road and ends at Yost Road. There is a gap, and then road begins again in SR 83 and continues easterly. Dunham Road is known as Township Road Number Six and is listed as 0.5 miles in length from Chamberlain Road to Yost Road and on the ODOT mileage records and is a township lying road between Grafton and Litchfield Township. There is no objection, provided Grafton Township and Prosecutor's Office advises as well. On April 18, 2003, Grafton Township Trustees met on April 8, and they have no objection to this name change. May 15, 2003, Loraine County Engineers submitted a list of property owners that will be affected. In Loraine County, one property owner, Lawrence G. and Sharon L. Paul, 19065 Chamberlain Road, Grafton, Ohio, and two in Medina County, one Julian Burke, 10400 Dunham Road, Grafton, Ohio, mailing address, but lives in Litchfield Township, and two, Marion Neal, 2880 Yost Road, Litchfield, Ohio. The Board passed Resolution 03405 on May 29, 2003, instructing the Clerk to advertise for public hearing on June 19 at 10:15 a.m. and the Chronicle Telegram on June 5 at 12, and the residents were notified by regular mail on June 6.
Is there anyone here that would like to address this issue?
I would so move.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye. And you will notify the Medina County Commissioners?
Yes, I will. And the Recorders. And at 10:30, there will be a public hearing for CDVG FY03, so do you want to go into the executive session now or break for a few?
No, I can't do it.
That's good. Okay. Okay, we'll break for another 10 minutes here.
There's the second public hearing today on the CDVG FY03. Ms. Kelly Glenn's here. Want me to start?
Good morning, Kelly.
Good morning. This is the fiscal 2003 CDVG Formula Grant Proposal. This public hearing is being conducted on behalf of the Loraine County Board of Commissioners in order to make application for CDVG Fiscal 2003 Formula Funds. This is the second of two required public hearings, which was advertised in the Chronicle Telegram and the Morning Journal on June 6 and Friday, June 13, 2003. The first hearing was held on February 21 of 2003. During the presentation, the eligibility requirements and application process were discussed. During this second public hearing, I will present the basic grant requirements and proposed projects to be submitted in this application for the CDVG Formula Fiscal 2003. Some changes have been made to the projects originally submitted that were advertised in the Chronicle and the Morning Journal per the Ohio Department of Development, Office of Housing and Community Partnerships, which will be outlined later in this public hearing. The guidelines for the application, Loraine County is permitted up to 15% of the allocation to administer the programs, but not more than 20% if the administrative cost includes a fair housing activity. The county cannot exceed its 15% of its total allocation for public service projects unless it requests a waiver from the Ohio Department of Development. Loraine County is permitted no more than six county projects in one given year. CDVG Formula Funds cannot be used for new construction projects unless it eliminates slum and blight or the removal of existing architectural barriers. The proposed activities must assist low-to-moderate income persons or the elimination of slum and blight, and there are specific activities that we are encouraged to fund. Homeless shelters, Meals on Wheels programs, counseling for the elderly, or activities that improve the mobility of the physically challenged. Loraine County is considered an acquired county since it has a population of less than 150 residents once you remove the cities of Loraine and Aleria's populations. As an acquired county, Loraine County is required to make application to and work with the State of Ohio on all community development projects. The cities of Loraine and Aleria are entitled communities and therefore operate their own programs. Loraine County is required to administer the programs for its acquired cities. An acquired city is defined as having a population of more than 5,000 but less than 50,000. Unless the city has a population of over 20,000, it can elect to administer their own formula program. The city of North Ridgeville meets that current criteria. North Ridgeville is able to apply for CDVG funds directly with the State of Ohio due to their population size. Loraine County's five acquired cities are Amherst, Avon, Avon Lake, Overland, and Sheffield Lake. Acquired cities have the responsibility and authority to identify and select their own projects based on their allocated amounts, less 15%, which is administered, which is permitted for county administrative fees. Each city is limited to no more than three activities. Another component of the form application is the community assessment strategy. The CAS is a planning document that identifies needs and strategies for investment. The CAS is a planning document that identifies needs and strategies for investment areas that will be the basis for community development projects during the formula program, such as housing, community, and economic development projects. Components of the CAS must have concentrations of LMI persons at or above 51% in the service area, which is determined by census or an income survey, or be locally designated as a slum and blighted area. If the area has a concentration of LMI persons of 61% or more, they are considered distressed. Currently, Lorain County has two areas that meet this criteria: Sheffield Township and the city of Oberlin, which is Census Track 601, which is the area, South Pleasant, Locust Street, it's where Russ United Methodist Church is located. Due to their large percentages of LMI persons in fiscal year 2003, Sheffield Township will be concentrating on a street improvement project. And within the city of Oberlin, Census Track 601, they will continue with their acquisition project. The city has done acquisition activities for fiscal '97, '98, 2001, and 2002, and has been able to provide six new homes specifically to LMI persons utilizing $117,300 in CDVG funds. Also, in fiscal year 2001, funding was provided to complete Lorain County's Housing Impediment Study update. This study looks at various aspects of housing to see where various types of housings are needed, as well as looking at what is impeding different types of housing from being provided. This study will be completed in July of 2003. Information in this study will also enhance the development of the CAS that I mentioned previously for the fiscal 2003 CDVG Formula Application. The CAS is available to the public in the Lorain County Community Development Department. The county's fiscal year 2003 allocation is $452,000. This is an increase of $5,000 from the fiscal 2002 application, which was $447,000. The county's allocation of $452,000, we are proposing the following breakdown of expenditures: $145,600 is for the five acquired cities; $239,400 for six county-wide activities; $67,000 for the implementation and administrative-related costs, which also include the Fair Housing Program. The $452,000 allocation will be matched with local contributions totaling $227,541, resulting in investment of $679,541 to benefit low-to-moderate-income families or for the elimination of slum and blight. The county is reserving $27,000 from the allocation to administer and implement grant activities for the five acquired cities and $40,000 for the six county activities, which is a total of, which comes to the total of the $67,000 I mentioned earlier. The $67,000 amount includes $15,000 for the Lorain County Fair Housing Program, which is approved earlier today, which covers the acquired cities that don't have their own fair housing programs, the villages, and also the township areas. Currently, the only acquired city that has their own fair housing program is Oberlin. The process. Notification and applications for the availability of CDVG funds were mailed to the township villages and small cities immediately after the first CDVG public hearing on February 21, 2003. A reminder notification of the availability of CDVG funds was also sent out again in April of 2003. Applications were taken through May 24 of 2003. A total of 19 applications were received for this funding round totaling $507,428, but we could only fund $452,000 in projects. The applications submitted have been reviewed for eligibility under the CDVG guidelines and for compliance with the national objectives. We present today the projects for Lorain County CDVG Fiscal 2003 application. It is our desire, following the outcome of this public hearing, to submit on behalf of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners an application to the Ohio Department of Development, Office of Housing and Community Partnerships prior to the July 11, 2003 deadline. The proposed projects are listed as follows. Parks and Recreation Facility for the city of Amherst, which would help with ADA compliance; CDVG funds, $35,700; total cost, $35,700. To provide a Meals on Wheels program for the city of Avon, $16,400; total cost, $16,400. Meals on Wheels for the city of Avon Lake, $13,700; total cost, $13,700. Curbs and sidewalks for ADA accessibility in the city of Avon Lake, $22,000 is the total cost of the project. Oberlin's acquisition project, $26,350. Street improvement in the, and I have, that's wrong, it's a typo, it should be the Sheffield Township.
Number five?
Yeah, number five. It should be Sheffield Township and not the city of Sheffield Lake.
No.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, let me start over. Number five is correct. Street improvement for the city of Sheffield Lake, $27,350 is the total project cost. 5A, Meals on Wheels program in the city of Sheffield Lake, $4,100. Number six, homeless shelter county-wide, $38,000; total cost, $240,657. Senior services county-wide, $14,000 for the total project. Street improvement for Sheffield Township, $34,800; total project cost, $39,684. Removal of architectural barriers for Columbia Township, which is ADA compliance in their township hall, an elevator. $91,000; total cost, $111,000. Home repair county-wide, $36,600; total project cost. In support of housing, county-wide, $25,000 total cost. And general admin and implementation for fair housing is $67,000. Total CDVG funds, $452,000; total cost, $679,541. All of the projects have been presented in this public hearing before the commissioners as a recommendation only. And in order to submit to the Ohio Department of Development on behalf of Lorain County, the activities must be approved by the Lorain County Board of Commissioners, but a final decision regarding these projects does not necessarily need to be made today. It can be made next week on the 26th. At this time, I would just like to ask if there are any questions on the information that has been provided in the public hearing.
Are there any questions from anyone here?
I'm answering. I have a question. What city is not, there are nine cities in Lorain County, and you listed the five acquired cities, plus North Ridgeville, that goes to the state, and Lurie and Lorain. Who's missing? Have I miscounted?
I hope you've miscounted.
Yeah, that's it.
You have Vermillion, but it's in Erie County.
Vermillion is the night.
Yeah, Erie County does their formula.
All right. Thank you. You've answered that question. The second question I have is, under the guidelines for applications, it says that there are specific activities that we are encouraged to fund, i.e. homeless shelters, Meals on Wheels programs, counseling for the elderly, or activities that improve the mobility of the physically challenged. Could we allocate some of these funds to Lorain County Transit?
If we did, they would specifically have to be earmarked for LMI persons. Yeah, and it would be a public service, but they would have to prove and give a report to show that they are specifically helping LMI persons. It'd be the same thing how we do with the homeless shelter. What they do is a neighborhood house gives me a monthly report, and they give me a listing of the types of people that they helped and the percentages.
Are you suggesting that the paperwork would be very cumbersome?
Yeah. For them, for them.
Commissioner, if I could help on that. We've looked at this in the past, and there are two issues that we have some concerns with. Number one, we can only have six county-wide programs. That would be one of them. We're already counting as a part of that six. We're doing the homeless shelters, and we're doing senior citizens. Those are called public service programs. We are supposed to try to stay within 15% of the total grant amount for public service. As long as the State of Ohio, in its aggregate, stays within 15% statewide, they will grant a waiver. Last year, we had a waiver. We were at 20% or 21%. This year, we're now at 25%. If you take transit in here, you're going to even be higher. And for the amount of money that probably would be available, knowing that we can only do six projects, we would have to kill one that's on the list and replace it with that. It's our recommendation that it probably isn't enough money that it would help when you take into consideration the public service notion and then the amount of paperwork that would be required. But it is an eligible activity, and that's what the commissioners want to have us consider. We can put some numbers together.
Thank you for your comments. Those are the only questions I have.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mary?
I'd just like to know about-
Mary, can you come up here because the camera can't get you back there?
I just had a question to ask if the projects that are considered projects to be done in compliance with the ADA, if those projects, if I could get further information on exactly what those projects are and how is it in compliance with the ADA?
Okay, the number one, the one with the city of Amherst, they're doing ADA handicap playground equipment for the kids, so that they would be able to go to the playground and play like the other kids.
It's going to be an integrated playground?
The project 3A, curbs and sidewalks to city of Avon Lake, this is their third year of doing handicap curb ramps for accessibility requirements in the city.
Street improvement, number five?
They're just improving the street. It's really, it's in really bad shape.
Are there sidewalks?
In Sheffield Lake, no. No, I'll be honest with you, no.
But that's an LMI neighborhood, so that's the national objective that's being met. If there were sidewalks, though, they would be required-
They would require to make them ADA compliant.
Right.
And for eight, that's also, that's just a street improvement. There's no sidewalks in the township, but if, again, if there were, then we would make those ADA compliant as well. And number nine is an elevator in Columbia Township Hall. Right now, there is no accessibility at all.
They have accessibility into the building, just not to the other floor.
It's not very good.
No, it's not to the downstairs either. They down into their walkway or up. They don't have a flat surface.
There's no ramp or anything.
Okay, so is this to cover accessibility into the building plus an elevator?
Plus an elevator, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Ma'am, would you come up to the mic, please?
My name's Christina Richardson. I'm from Rochester Village. The way I understand this is only if you're a big city with a lot of people, you get funded. If not, you don't even have a chance?
No, that's not it at all.
Okay, because we put in for sidewalk grants. This is our second year, and we even offered to pay half of the cost this year, and I see that we're not even on there. Like, you can't even walk down the sidewalks at all. You have to walk in the street, you know, and people with, the handicapped people, they can't even walk, you know, uptown at all. I took pictures and submitted pictures and everything, and I was just interested to know, you know, why we weren't even suggested on here to be approved.
Ron, can you answer her question, please?
Kelly reviewed those, so I would defer to Kelly. I'm aware of what's going on, but I would rather have Kelly respond.
Okay.
I went out to Rochester Village and looked at where she was proposing to put sidewalks. A lot of the places, there's no existing sidewalks. We are not permitted to pay where there's no existing sidewalks. So it's better for wherever there are sidewalks currently, and if they're broken up and they need it for ADA compliance, those individuals have to come to me on their, individually, and they can take, they can go through emergency home repair application, and we can provide sidewalks, but they have to meet the income requirements in order to do that. And that's what happened last year, and a lot of the people that did come to me to try to get assistance, they didn't qualify income-wise.
The cities that are on our list for the ADA sidewalks are only doing curb cuts at the intersections. If Rochester has intersections with existing streets that are not handicapped accessible, then that would meet the guidelines for the program, and we could provide those, but I'm unaware of any of those situations in Rochester where that would be the case. Last year, I think it was, we did have funding set in for Rochester Village to do stormwater improvements, and when it went down to the State of Ohio, it was determined that that was in the state 511 public right of way, and they made us adjust that money, and we did an amendment through the county commissioners back here at the local level, because that's the state's requirement to put in that storm sewer line. And we used that money for home repair, hoping that people in Rochester Village would apply for, if they were income-eligible, for replacement sidewalks. But if it's a new sidewalk, none exist, then we are not permitted to provide funding for new construction.
That's not true. Did you actually get out of your car and walk down the sidewalks? Like, there might have been just small pieces and parts.
Yes, I did.
We looked at the pictures.
And Ron has too.
There was no, we did not apply for any sidewalk that was not there. It was all needing to be repaired. It's all broken up. You can't even, like I said, you can't walk down it, you can't push a stroller, you can't take a wheelchair or anything.
How about the replacement part of it? I think that, I don't know-
Yeah, that's all it is, is just replacement.
No, but I meant for the program, that the other program that Ron was talking about.
Oh, every time they call, she says there's no funding available, is what she told my people. They keep calling me and asking me, "You gave me the wrong number." And I'm like, "No." You know, she said there'd be more money available in November, and so then nobody would apply because she tells them, Kelly tells them, that there is no funding available, that all the money's gone already.
Well, it seems to me if you have sidewalks and they need to be replaced, you need to establish if they're low and moderate income, so they could come under the other. Have you gone through that process?
Yeah, that's what I was just talking about, that we tried with her.
No, but I mean, have they been established as low and moderate income?
There's a couple that were, yes, but there was no money available.
Okay, but there might be money available now, right?
Is there money available now?
There's currently money available now, but when those people called me, I had ran out of money, and I had a waiting list of people that were ahead of those people.
Okay, but you have money now?
We have money now, so they would need to call me like today or tomorrow.
Okay. We need to close the loop here so that they can get the service, especially since she came all the way from Rochester, which is the farthest point south that you can go in Lorain County.
I'm trying to do something out there.
Aren't you serving as mayor?
Yes, I am.
I thought so. Can we not facilitate that absent this? I mean, in another form?
Sure, and that's why we're holding the public hearings, to get these kinds of comments. We can still go back, if it's the wish of the commissioners, to look at this, and I think there's going to be another comment made under the public participation, another entity that we're providing some funding, but maybe not the level that they desire. We would be happy to look at both of those, but we would have to get resolution to both of those issues by next week in order to get the application completed and submitted. So, my suggestion at this point, given the comments where we are already, that you probably do not want to make a motion today to stick with these programs, but rather have us look again in greater detail with those that are brought to our attention today. We'd be happy to do that.
We don't have to vote on the projects today.
You do not have to vote on it today? You can vote on it next Thursday, but next Thursday would be the final date that we- But next Thursday would be the final date that we would need to make a decision from the commissioners.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Good morning. My name is Anita Bertrand and I'm the Executive Director of Compass House.
Hi, Anita.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm good. First of all, I want to say thank you to the Community Development Department for their support in the preparation of our application. We've been meeting with them for several months now and they've been very helpful in helping us to put this project together and try to find funding to support our supportive housing project. Because of this recommendation, I want to say that if it, you know, passes, we will be able to treat another 40 male clients that are in the Lorain County area. This program, supportive housing, is a new level of care that's done in this county for clients that are chemically dependent and that have completed not just treatment in our programs, but treatment in other programs that are certified from the state. So it allows us to continue to, continue our mission to hold on to the clients and to help them to integrate back into the community as productive citizens. So I just want to say thank you and that because of this, we're looking forward, you know, to moving forward and serving Lorain County clients and also clients that are in the villages and places like that. Oftentimes, we see they're indigent, the transportation needs are scarce. And so we work with them and get them where they need to be, put them on the, we have vans and we take them out and help them find jobs and skills that they need to go back into the community. So I just want to say I hope that the project moves forward and that, you know, with the recommendation level that is here, we're still going to be seeking another 25,000 from foundations and others in the community. And that if you see where there's any, you know, discretionary funding available, we ask that you consider our project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments? Okay, seeing none. I would move that this public hearing be concluded.
And I'll second. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Okay, move to go into executive session at this point.
And I will second. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Yes.
The commissioners have reconvened from executive session. Number nine, personnel summary sheet. So move to accept, to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Number 25, award contract for Crossroads Asphalt Recycling, Columbia Station, Ohio, on the amount of $98,447.40 to be paid from MVGT 22001-1102-450301 for the 2,003 certified crack sale program. These bids were received. This bid was 1% above the lowest bidder, but in compliance with Resolution 01132, local preference and within the engineer's estimate of $199,903.
Jerry, did you have something to say?
Thank you, Commissioner. With respect to this item there, there have been two legal issues raised. The first is whether Erie Blacktop would qualify as a local business under our local preference policy. With all due respect to the arguments that were made, our policy clearly indicates that on the bid presentation, the bidder is supposed to indicate their principal place of business and it would be that place where they would indicate something that would give us a heads-up that they consider themselves to be a local bidder. And my understanding of the facts is that was not done. The language that the council quoted is in there to make sure that just because somebody designates that we do business at such and such a street in Lorain County, we have a method to go, you know, if they're not just putting up a post office box or something, that language is meant to help us go back and assure that they do in fact have significant economic and physical ties to the county out of just, just other than saying it. So in any event, you know, I've looked at it. I do not agree with council's position that they qualify as a local business. I don't think they've met the obligations under presenting the bid to establish that position. On the second issue, as far as the application of the preference, their presentation does have merit in many respects. The application of the local preference policy isn't something that automatically happens and is to be used in all cases under the terms of the resolution you have passed. Counsel is very correct in when he says, "In order to apply the local preference policy, you have to find, you have to make a finding that it does not impair the competitive integrity of the bid process." So you have to make an analysis here whether or not you feel applying that policy will have an impact and in effect destroy the competitive nature of this bid. Now with that respect, and I think we should allow the respective parties, if, you know, if they have any other facts that they want to present to us. From what I've seen, there are two sets of facts that quite frankly indicate two different directions on this. We went back and we gathered some information from the county engineer as to what kind of bids we were getting before the local preference was adopted and after. It appears that we've generally been getting two or three bids each year and that does not appear to have changed at all. We seem to be getting the same number of total bids year in, year out as we got before we put in the local preference and since we've put it in. So there doesn't seem to be an impact on the total number of bids that come in. On the other hand, we are faced with a situation where we are only getting one local bidder year in, year out, that's getting it. And although it has not had any impact prior to this year, we are only getting one local bidder that is being able to take advantage of that preference. And I think the argument that's coming from Erie is that that's, and we, in fact, Crossroads is the party that has ended up getting the award of this bid for at least five years back. There certainly is an argument there that applying the local preference this year results in a situation in which there is really only one bidder out there that can take advantage of that and it is not really giving us a complete competitive system here. So I think those are the two factual issues that you need to weigh in making a determination whether you think the application of this policy would allow us to maintain competition here. And again, I think we ought to welcome or allow the two parties and the engineer to add any other kind of statements that they want to make as far as why they think the application of this would or would not maintain the integrity of the competitive system here.
Okay. Who wants to speak up first?
Thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners. Briefly to Mr. Ennis's comments, you know, I reiterate what I said earlier. But as to Erie Blacktop not meeting the technicality of putting his address down on the bid as a local preference type of a contractor. In law school, they taught us to look at the substance of the thing more than the form. And I think the substance here is that they surely are a local contractor having a significant impact on the community and a presence, fiscal presence, and an economic presence in your community. So I think the substance outweighs the form. Yeah, they didn't fill out a form and we understand that. We looked at that and knew that that argument might be made, but we hope that you look past that and see, in reality, the significance Erie Blacktop really has. The second thing, I think Mr. Ennis puts it very succinctly. You really don't want a situation where there's only one bidder that has an interest in your program because that becomes a monopoly and monopolies can get expensive. So we just encourage you to maintain the competitive environment here. You've done great so far. The fact that they have had this project year in and year out may speak to some competitive aspects, but, you know, we think Erie Blacktop has a low bid, so. Mr. Wykel might have something else to add.
If I may continue. You had mentioned that the form wasn't filled out. The form was filled out with our correct address, which is Sanoski, Ohio. But if I may go to your resolution, and this is the resolution that was in the bid package, and I'm going to paraphrase. It says, "Local preference will be given to vendors and contractors that have an established place of business, comma." It does not say "in Lorain County." It says "an established place of business, comma, defined as a business with significant economic and physical presence in Lorain County." It doesn't necessarily say that I have to be located in Lorain County. It says I have to have a significant economic and physical presence in Lorain County. We thought that to be important. As far as the intent of the resolution, we believe that the intent, and I'm only guessing because I can't judge what was in the mind of the commissioners at the time they made this resolution, but the intent would have been to keep local dollars local. And that means keeping tax dollars local, keeping projects local, keeping the money local so that it's staying in your community. And we believe that we do that by employing your employees. Our largest union hall that we pull from is the Lorain County Union Hall. Our entire crew for this project, with the exception of the two foremen and the supervisor, will be Lorain County employees. We've done, we've done so many projects in here. We've done the streetscape around this building itself back in the late 80s and early 90s. We believe that we should be considered a local contractor. And that's really all I have.
I did want to add one thing to that. The form that needed to be filled out with the bid, I don't want the commissioners to get sidetracked by that. That's if Erie Blacktop felt that it needed that 3% to be applied to its bid. It doesn't need that, it's the low bid. So I don't want you to get sidetracked by that issue.
I'm Ron McKinley with Crossroads Asphalt. And the only couple of comments, I disagree with the council here as far as monopolies are concerned. I don't think I should be penalized because I've been a successful low bidder over the last several years. There is an advantage with mobilization for one point that might give me a little bit of an edge. The issue that I'm concerned with is that there were at least three bidders. There were several others that took the bids out. So Erie, as well as myself, has to look at that when we put a bid package together, knowing that there is competition. We went in this and knowing there would be competition, gave it the best price we could and still make money. Nobody's doing this for the practice. We all have to have a profit in it and we all do. And depending on how much profit we desire to make on each job obviously affects our bid. When we went into bidding this, we all looked at the exact same facts. There were no surprises. If there were a problem before, if the 3% was an issue, I would think that should have been brought up before the bid. Not after the numbers are on the board, not after everybody has seen the results because now we are altering the results. The commissioners have the right to pick the lowest and/or best. I have not had it every year. Erie was successful in beating me several years back. They beat me in other projects. It's a good competition between two companies. And I just say if we going in, we all know the rules and we all bid it, let's go with the results at the end the way they say, not change something afterwards. Thank you.
Commissioner Blair?
No, was Mr. Carney going to speak again or you're done? Well, first of all, I'd like to thank both of the companies for submitting a bid. Having worked for a local contractor in the past, I am well aware of the fact that there requires time and effort to put a bid package together. Unfortunately, this lies here for us to make a decision. And the reason why we're addressing this today is because the engineer would like to begin his project on Monday. That's why we're where we are at this point in time, so.
Right.
I think that Mr. Ennis is our legal counsel. He has declined to tell us how to vote, which is a good thing. But he does make an, stating he does not agree with the first issue about the location of the business. And I tend to accept his application there. The second is we need to keep this competitive advantage for the county and the funds that we have access to. However, Mr. McKinley made a very interesting point. And I've not heard this in the extensive discussion we'd had regarding this issue behind closed doors, which we are entitled to do. He made a comment about the 3%. If you had an objection to the 3%, perhaps it could have been brought up before instead of after. And I thought that was an interesting observation. So I don't know what your comments might be, but those are mine.
I'm thinking, you know, that the local bid preference for this particular project should maybe be removed from what I've heard in executive session. It seems that there are not enough local companies that can bid on this. And as you mentioned from Crossroads, that because your nearness, I imagine your meaning in that was because you can keep the asphalt warm because of where you're trucking it from? That that reduces your cost? Whatever it is that you put on the road?
The transportation of the product isn't the concern. We're pretty much buying from suppliers and then we heat it in the county. It's not an asphalt that we're laying down. The mobilization I was referring to against an out-of-county contractor, you still have to bring all your equipment in and all your people in. So I'm saying that may be a possibility that I have an edge. There is, to my knowledge, at least six or seven other people in this county that is capable, that are capable of bidding this particular bid.
But yet, we're not getting these bids.
Why they chose not to, I can't talk for them.
Right.
But I know I lose work to them all the time, so I know they're capable of doing it. Because if I got everything I bid, I'd be retired and they could have this bid. So there's a lot of competition out there. There is no monopoly of any kind. There is, it just happens to be a close bid this time. A year ago, it wasn't as close and the 3% didn't come into play. Before that, the 3% wasn't even involved and we were successful to be low bidder. Like I said, going into this bid, everybody looked at the same rules and regulations and everybody understood it. And now afterwards, we're trying to change things. I just, I don't understand that.
We did go back five years, though, didn't we, Jerry? Wasn't that five years that we reviewed? No, he had it all listed. Of course, the last sheet. It's hard to understand what reason the other companies wouldn't bid on this. That we should only have two, Fisher.
But yet, three or four took the bids out. So not knowing how many are going to bid, we all give it our best shot to be the low bidder. Because once they take it out, you assume they are going to bid it.
Looking at the history of, that you're- Looking at the history of, that you're referring to Commissioner Vacey, it appears that there has been not a strong variation in the number of bids being submitted. It does, also doesn't appear that the application of the local preference has any bearing on the number of applications that have been submitted in the past. I'll move to award the contract to Crossroads Asphalt as recommended by the county engineer after we have reviewed this bidding process, noting that this is a discretionary use on the part of the commissioners.
I would second that. And, and for discussion, I would like to ask, can, can you answer this for me? Do you think it would be wise to remove the local bid preference for this particular specification that you put out? I know it was in the specs that you put out now.
To answer your question, no, I don't. There are other individuals that do this work. Why they did not bid this particular project, there'd be numerous reasons. Too busy, equipment failure. There is another competitor in this, in this list, and I believe they won another award in a municipality in Lorain County. But I've always felt that, and I supported your movement in February of 2001, that the local preference is a well-meaning venue to not only keep the working public busy in Lorain County, but also has the inventiveness in that, that would bring companies into Lorain County. So I have always felt that that ordinance, that resolution that was passed was a work-oriented concept of keeping businesses viable in Lorain County and bringing in new ones. That always was the intent. But to answer your original question, no. I support that, and I think it applies to every one of our contracts.
Okay, I appreciate your opinion because you are the professional in, in the engineering department.
Thank you.
And like I said, I appreciate that and respect it. Would you take the vote?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacey?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Thank you.
Move to adjourn?
Yes.
Unsightly litter is often the result of well-intentioned people like you and me being careless at the curb, around business areas, and at work sites. Lucky the ladybug, Ohio's First Lady of Litter Prevention, says, "Nobody wants to live or work around trash." Litter lowers property values and its costs late to clean up.
Keep Lorain County beautiful. Put the lid on trash.
construction has been reached and completed. This event includes an historically based ritual during which an evergreen tree and the American state and county flags are raised to the highest point of this structure. This effort is a gesture of wishing prosperity to the building and safety to those who use it, as well as to recognize the diligence of the construction workers for their care and concern while building it, especially during this severely cold past winter season. The sunshine and warmth today is indicative of the spring season which we will officially welcome tomorrow. Topping-out ceremonies are an important custom in the steel construction industry. However, there are various stories about its origin. One is that the Germans in the Black Forest seem to have invented the Christmas tree custom to celebrate the nativity of Jesus Christ, and hardly a structure goes up in Germany without an evergreen to signal the birth of a new building. The Swiss also laid claim to the custom of a fir tree to signal the topping-out. The American flag was added in about 1919 to demonstrate the ironworkers' loyalty to flag and country. Others believe the flag was first used when steel framing became popular. It was in dedication to good old US-made, take my page away, take the blue page away, page two, good old US-made steel beams. The signing of the last beam or girder by laborers has similar traditional roots. So we are gathered here today to add our own personal touch to this topping-out ritual and to give thanks to the dedicated employees that have worked so hard and through such a winter to continue to keep this project on schedule. I have an email from my former administrative assistant, Gloria Kretler, from North Ford Myers. She regularly checks the Justice Center's progress on the webcam. Her March 15th memo says, quote, "The Justice Center building is looking good. It must have been rough on the construction crews with all the bad weather you had had." So your progress and devotion is known in Florida as well. Last fall, we predicted that the topping-out ceremony would occur on my birthday, which is this Saturday. So thanks again for all your hard work and for being on time. The citizens of Lorain County appreciate all the fine work that has gone into this project to date. We look forward to its dedication, and we invite you all to move down to the beam now and to sign your name.
What this is, is generally on these type of jobs, we like to put a panel together that simulates all the aspects of the building. The building's going to be comprised of two different colors of brick with various different reveals in that brick. Also, you're going to have sandstone cast into the brick in certain panels. Outside of that, this is going to be the curtain wall system. I don't know how many of y'all have seen the rendering of the building. We have a large curtain wall that goes up the front of the building. It's going to be comprised of this type of material in this color, and then we throw in the different types of glass that'll also be in that panel. On the other side, you'll see there's a louver in place. That's just going to be the typical type of louver that'll be in an exhaust area of the building. We just try to depict all the aspects of the building in this small little mock-up panel just so everyone can have an idea of what it looks like. What we'll do is we'll just take a tour of the cruiser, and we'll go into the secure areas that we recently completed. Of course, this is the secure Sally Port where the sheriff can bring them down and unload them. Doors go down, everything is secure. From this point as we go through, everything is secure.
We're going to use cobalts on all the, all the doors. So only they'll be able to get down here. But this is not, none of this is going to be able to be public.
Right. Put them here, right?
This is one of the hearts of the building.
Oh, wow.
This is the main chiller room. The bourbon piping, process piping, that hard work down here, as you can see, giving, giving the main heart of the building. All the under control. We've got two different chillers, pumps, auxiliary pumps, everything to keep the building cool and warm as necessary. As the piping or the pumps vibrate, there's enough of a jolt in there that eventually it'll wear out. These are Bictolic fittings. They have a rubber O-ring in here. It'll wear those out unless you have some flexible connector to let things move separately. This room houses the air handler that controls all the airflow in this level of the building. Also, this room contains the fire suppression system booster pumps, domestic water booster pumps. All the main water flow in the building comes from this room. As you can see, that's, all the pipes that go over to those chillers conveys through here, continues out down that corridor, and eventually it'll go up seven floors to the top. Those hanger beams, they'll get, they'll get fireproofed afterwards. No asbestos. Generally, they come in and they fireproof all the structure, and once these men come in and start hanging pipes, they have to kind of improvise and put their own steel up. As that's not a structural member of the building so much, it's not as important that it's all done at the same time. The other side of this wall, we've got this typical, I believe it's the sheriffs and the personnel, their locker rooms and things are down there. Round the corner, that's just a general purpose corridor. If somebody comes here, they're going to go through those secure areas into the secure elevators, right up to the court floor that they're going to be on, there'll be another secure holding facility there. Unlike the way things are right now, prisoners aren't going to be out in the open. When this, when this facility's in operation, once they come in, they're, they're well-isolated from everyone else. We're scheduled right now, and we're, we're right on track, I believe, to be turning the building over late spring of 2004. And we hope that the, the building will be in operation in the summer of 2004. It's going to take quite a bit of time for the county to move in, get all their equipment in place, the furniture in place. So we're looking at the, you know, in the summer of 2004. So, we're looking at, you know, in the summer of 2004.
Grass clippings, food scraps, garden remains, leaves, all have one thing in common. They can all be composted. All these things will go back to nature, using only air and water. Nature will recycle these and numerous other items back into rich soil to benefit your garden or shrubs. Turn it on the ground or tumble it in special drums. Composting saves landfill space and can save you money. Composting can turn into a fun project for the entire family.